Yeah, maybe when you are.
Can you do a roll call, please?
It's for the special meeting at six o'clock. Councilor Capone.
Here.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Here.
Councilor Piero.
Here.
Councilor Hanlon.
Here.
Councilor Marchese. Councilor Matusky.
Here.
Councilor McKinnon.
Here.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilor Politano.
Here.
Councilor Simonelli.
(coughs).
And President Delasola.
Here.
Ten members present. We do have a quorum.
Please stand salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, can you read the one only piece on the agenda, please?
The only item here at the six o'clock meeting, Mr. President, is a presentation offered by Councilor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President to have the administration give a presentation of the FY 2020 capital improvement plan.
Chairman.
Councilor Hanlon.
Open this up to the public.
All in favor?
This is just a presentation. Mr. Demus is here for this one.
Does Chairman make a motion to have Mr. Demus come before us?
Second, all in favor? I have it. Just state your name for the record, please.
Eric Demus, CFO. And actually, if I may, just because there was a little bit of confusion between the six o'clock that we're having right now and item on the regular city council agenda at seven in regards to the CIP. So, the easy one is, we're not asking for any appropriations right now at this meeting, nor are we asking for any capital appropriations to be voted on at the seven o'clock. So, the seven o'clock item that's on the agenda is merely just accepting what was presented to the city council, a formality a few weeks ago on a Saturday. The purpose of tonight, though, as I indicated at that Saturday meeting when we made the presentation on the CIP, there are a lot of items on the FY 20 CIP. We're not going to be, as I stated at that meeting, we're not requesting full authorization or appropriation on the full CIP until the fall. However, given the short construction window, I did indicate that there were a number of items that we wanted to begin the process early and that I would be presenting those at another meeting. Due to the fact, scheduling issues, because we aren't having a ways and means where I thought this was going to be appropriated, that's the purpose of tonight because there's no ways and means between now, or no formal official ways and means between now and the end of the year. So, I have summarized the amounts that we're going to be requesting for the next full city council meeting. Make sure if you could distribute those on that side. And I'll pass those down. You could pass those that way. Pass those that way. If I may, given that I have Mr. Sousa here tonight and Mr. St. Louis, if somebody could make an invitation to invite the two of them up, that way we can take them. So, I've color coded the two documents in front of you. The blue are going to be what we're requesting for general fund appropriations at the last meeting this month. And the second document, which is gray and yellow at the bottom, is our water sewer capital improvements. They will actually require two separate votes. The general fund, highlighted in the blue, is where we issue our general obligation bonds for the general fund, all non-enterprise related capital expenditures. And then the water sewer will require a separate vote, and those are specific to the water sewer capital improvements. I'll actually start off with the general fund, the larger of the two. And the bulk of them are planning and development in DPW Highway, but I figured I'd address the small item at the top, the police department BMW motorcycles. The police department had decided to make a change. Historically, the city has always purchased Harley-Davidson motorcycles, but there's been a growing trend throughout the country, actually, transitioning to BMW police-designed motorcycles, specifically due to the reduction in maintenance costs. The police department has already, through the procurement office after city council's approval, has already surplus the old Harley-Davidson motorcycles that we had currently in force. We ended up getting about $7,000 apiece for those two through bids. We're coming into summertime. These are the only requests we're going to make right now for anything vehicle-related. We still need to do additional due diligence in regards to the bulk of the DPW vehicles and what our actual needs are and how it works into our program. But given that it's New England and we have a short motorcycle season, we thought that we'd put this before you right now. I can tell you that our officers have actually already been training on these actual bikes that the city of Somerville has already rolled out. So, as soon as these are authorized, we're expecting we'd be able to take custody of these through a state bid process through the end of July, but our officers will be fully trained on them prior to us actually receiving them. Two.
Any questions for our guest on this item? Councilor Florio?
Anything you want.
On these bikes, I'm sorry, how many bikes does this cover?
This would be two.
Two bikes. And how many bikes do we normally purchase?
Two.
So, it's the same.
We're staying the same.
And what's the difference between the Harley-Davidson and these bikes, the price?
The prices, they're fairly comparable. However, studies have shown that the maintenance and the wear and tear on the BMWs is significantly less.
So, the maintenance is less, but does it cost more to fix a BMW than it does the Harley-Davidson one? Like, if something goes wrong with the BMW.
Yep.
Is, does it cost more? I'm saying, I know you're saying there's less maintenance, but if we're changing a tire on a BMW, how much does it cost? If we're changing a tire on a Harley-Davidson, how much does that cost? That's...
I can tell you, I ask the same questions, especially being a former Harley guy, because the minute you say BMW, I figure that the costs are just going to significantly go through the roof.
Right.
But they're actually not.
Okay.
And that's why, across the country, even if you're replacing certain components, the warranties are better on the BMWs. And anytime you're talking about a public safety piece of equipment like that, the costs are a little bit higher. It's public safety. But overall, it's been shown that the BMW are actually cheaper to operate.
Okay.
Over the life of the vehicle.
And when, and if we obviously have to appropriate the money, when do you plan on purchasing these, would you say?
It looks like we'd be able to receive them before the end of July.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Capone, and then Councilor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three or two our guests. I'm just looking at the breakdown of these things. Florence Park Phase One Construction. Is that park in several phases, or is that actually Phase Two from the tot lot?
That's actually a correction that Mr. Sousa identified earlier this morning that I just didn't have time to make.
Okay.
Phase One is complete. This is actually Phase Two.
Okay. And then, finally, then the other concern I have is with these renovations, I'm looking at tot lots, citywide, and the number of the parks. Are we doing these all at the same time like we did in the first phase? Are we going to stagger these? Because part of the concern is, if we're doing them all at the same time, there's no way for the kids to play. So, we should try to stagger them so that at least there's an outlet for the children to be able to play. So, that would be my concern with that.
Sure. I'll defer to Mr. Sousa.
Sure. So, we are staggering them. Go ahead. We're staggering them this year as well, and it's the same practice. We try not to do two parks at the same time in the same neighborhood. But certainly, the design, the planning, and by staggering, I don't mean by holding it off for another year.
Sure, completely.
But differences between starting something in the spring versus summer versus fall.
Okay. And then, property acquisitions. Do we have specific parcels at this point, or that's just funding for potential?
We do not have any specific parcels at this point. That's funding for potential.
Okay. And with the lower Broadway bus, is that a typo land? Is that supposed to be Bus Lane?
Lane, yes.
Okay. And are we talking from Rotary down toward Sullivan?
So, if I'm...
Southbound?
If I may.
Sure.
Jay Monte is here. He can speak in greater detail about it if it's okay.
Get Jay Monte before us, please.
Yeah, Jay Monte, planning and development. Yes, short answer to that is, just circle down to Boston Line.
Okay. And, so we don't have to speak too in depth. Okay. And then with the, the street and sidewalk repair, $3 million, approximately how many streets, how many sidewalks do we think we might be able to get through with that?
So, this is the first year in a number of years that we've been doing a lot more mill and overlay work. We do have a couple utility consent orders that govern us replacing utilities in town. So, there's approximately six or seven streets that go along with those utilities, and then there's six or seven streets that are being done right now or anticipated to be done because the utility work's already completed.
Okay. And with sidewalk repairs, roughly the same?
Yeah. We generally try to do the sidewalks with the full depth.
Same street, same sidewalk, same time.
When we do the mill and overlay work, we fix the worst of the sidewalk sections, the trip hazards, the broken panels, those types of things.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilor Hanlon, and then Councilor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking at this, I'm looking at a price of $4,150,000, and I know that this is money that's going to, we're going to pay through by bond, borrowing money. And eventually, I know we don't have to pay for this, but eventually you have to pay for it when the bond become due and everything. I'm looking at the BMW motorcycles for $50,000. Why aren't we using the, maybe it's all spent, but why aren't we using the Encore money for that? Because we're supposed to have $5 million to spend on that.
Yes. As of right now, we haven't identified, we haven't allocated any of the money coming in from Encore. It's strictly been just used as a funding resource. Typically, we would have included the 50,000 as part of the police's operating budget. They just hadn't submitted it in time. And I should have said this earlier, all of the items that you have before you, we're anticipating bonding, with the exception of the BMW motorcycles. That, when we ask for an appropriation, will be coming out of the CIP stabilization fund. Just because they're a lower-cost item, didn't make sense to actually incur the cost to bonding them. They do have a useful life that does exceed five years, but we do have that money set aside that city council has put into the CIP stabilization fund. It's over 3 million at this point. The smaller item that we would normally have in the operating budget, we're going to be asking for CIP stabilization. One of the other reasons why it didn't make sense to, when they actually submitted the request, and it was after we had already started the appropriation process for the operating budget, it didn't make sense to include it at that time for a one-item purchase because then it spikes the operating budget. As you recall, within, for example, the police operating budget, we have a number of cruisers in, as a line item, that we could bond, but we don't because we're replacing those every year, so it's a consistent line item. We typically try to stay away from those items that we're only going to hit, like, once every five years from the operating budget, so we have more consistency in the operating budget. So, that, that is really what the CIP stabilization is designed to handle. So, when we present the order, we'll be asking to bond all of this, with the exception of the motorcycles.
Okay. And that's good. I still don't know if it answered my question.
Sorry, what's your question?
The $50,000, why aren't we using it coming out of the $5 million that we're supposed to be getting for public safety from Encore? And I know you said that we haven't...
That money, exactly. As we get closer, it, just because we had told the council when we put the budget together that as of right now, the full $25 million in payments that were coming in, we're going to be going towards the operating budget.
Wait, wait one minute. You keep saying it, and other people keep saying it, the $25 million that keep coming in, but it's $30 million that's coming in. Am I correct or not?
Well, you were asking about the $5 million, which is a component of the community host agreement. There are two payments within the community host agreement. One's a $20 million payment, the other one's a $5 million payment. So, that, yes, under the host agreement, there is $25 million coming in. However, there's actually going to be considerable more because on top of that, we also receive a local meals and room tax.
You get, I know, you're getting away from what I wanted to know. Originally, $30 million coming to the city of Ebb. $5 million going to public safety. That's the question I'm asking. Is that still true, or is it not true? And I know we don't have the money yet.
It's partially true. So, underneath the community host agreement, I think the $30 million that you're referring to are the three payments that they provided to the city prior to opening. So, this past year, we got the 12-5, 12-5.
That's crazy.
That's the 30 million. Underneath the community host agreement, we're going to be getting two payments that will be paid by Encore quarterly. One payment is 20 million, the other one is 5 million. On top of that, though, we are going to be receiving additional funds through our local meals and rooms from Encore. That's going to be at least $6 million, and I'm still working out what their sales forecasts are going to be so that we can work to determine a better budgeted amount prior to setting the tax rate. So, we are going to be receiving in excess of 30, but the community host agreement only stipulates 25 in the first year.
I'll have to go back some years and grab some newspaper articles, but they definitely said we're going to get $30 million a year, $5 million going to public safety, and the other park, you had it split up three ways, $8 million plus for each one of the three sections that you talked about. So, I have to go back and check it out, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Can't take your word for it. Okay. Thank you.
I'll say that, Counselor. Councilor Matusky, and then Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Swan Street Park renovation. Maybe I'm wrong, but wasn't that park just done?
You're correct. The playground was done. This is for the Phase Two, the ball field areas.
There's a ball field there. I know there's a tennis court, a basketball court.
There used to be a basketball court there, no tennis court.
So, that's being phased out?
So, the basketball court area has been replaced with artificial turf used nowadays by outdoor fitness, family picnics, light recreation, and so on. The Phase Two area is the ball field area, and also within that area, looking to add a, potentially a dog park if the site can accommodate it as well. So, you're correct that we did do Swan Street over the playground area, to be specific. This is the second half of it.
Okay. And is this the end of the parks now? I mean, it seems to me that every park in the city has been done. I'm just curious, is there any other parks left that be renovated? I know they all needed a lot of work, especially Sacramento Park. Is this the end? I mean, and that tot lot down on, is it Grover and Lynn Street? Is that, didn't we vote on that recently? Is that, that was last year we voted on?
I believe that was last year.
That was a million-dollar tot lot thing.
Remaining is Shapiro, for example, which we programmed in the CIP. Remaining is the stadium playground. Appleton is funded for, for this year, was voted on last year. So, I, we go through a cycle, right? So, every, every 10 years, it's recommended to do updates.
I can remember when that tot lot was rechristened and redone. I mean, it goes back a few years, but needless to say, the streets and sidewalks, what's, do you have the streets that are going to be done? And I just want to compliment whoever did Second Street, the residential section did it quickly and without too much of a problem. The neighbors are very happy. That was probably the worst street in the city. I want to thank you, Mr. St. Louis. Whoever the contractor was that did that work, did it professionally, didn't put the neighbors in any long-term aggravation like they did on a couple of the streets in that neighborhood. But anyway, just a brief list, if you know what streets have been done.
Sure. And certainly, I'll use this opportunity to alert everyone that the rest of Second Street is going to be, starting to be milled tonight from the Chelsea line of 16.
The industrial part?
The industrial part.
Wow.
Just too far gone to wait for development turnover.
Beautiful. Is that same company?
Same company.
What is that company's name?
DNR.
They are probably the, DNR.
Correct.
I hope that the city uses them more often. So, second half of Second Street's being there.
Correct.
And that's already in the budget from last year's budget.
Correct.
Beautiful. Okay, what streets? I'm just curious, I, people call me all the time, Mr. President, if it's not such a long list.
Sure. So, they're currently on Elm Way and Elm Road, which were a couple of the worst streets in the city. A couple of the streets that we have slated water work for, such as Grover. I apologize, the list off the top of my head. Second Street obviously was done. Chelsea was recently done.
Well, this is for the new?
Yeah. Oh, well, forecasting this calendar year compared to next calendar year, I tend to go calendar year, whereas this one is fiscal year.
Oh, I see.
So, a number of the projects are being forecasted moving forward.
And Bow Street, you know, that's was on the agenda. Is that somewhere in the...
Yep. Bow Street should be done in this fall.
This fall?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's good news. I'm glad you have a good contractor that's doing the streets now. And that's great news, Mr. President, to hear that Second Street, the no man's land, if you want to call it that, I mean, the potholes are just amazing over there. And those people do pay taxes, those businesses do, and probably travel by more trucks and ripped apart really easily down there. But that's good news. Is Chelsea, so that will go right to the Chelsea line. They did theirs.
Yes. Chelsea did their piece. They also did their piece of Market Street, basically, at the county line.
Well, that's good news. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McGlaughlin, and Counselor Politano.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Northern Strand Bike Path Extension, where does that take us to from West Street? So, it starts West Street again, right, and then?
Right. So, it starts at West Street, continues under the highway bridges, and then goes behind the Gateway Mall, and it then intersects with the new Encore River Walk, right behind their facility.
So, where take, okay, because I thought the Gateway Mall was going to take it through their property. Where taking it through their property?
So, the way we arrange it, it's, we have a joint agreement with them. They're funding their piece, we're funding our piece, but we're designing it and constructing it under one contract for the sake of expediency. So, that's...
She's great.
That 1.5 million is for our stretch only. They'll be paying an additional cost for their piece.
So, their, their piece isn't calculated into this 1.5 million?
Correct.
So, this is 1.5 million plus whatever they spend through their parcel of money?
Correct.
When will that work be done, Jay?
That design is slated to be finished at the end of this year, and then we would put it to bid hopefully over the winter and start construction. It'd be in construction this time next year. The caveat I'll give you with that is that this is all taking place on land that is not our land. It's MBTA, it's DCR, it's Gateway Mall, and so we're kind of beholden to their review processes and any, you know, changes they need to make. So, we're hopeful that schedule is realistic, and I think it is, but, you know, there's always the possibility that they could come back and add something to that.
Okay. Seven-acre park design and construction. I know there's a whole lot going on down there right now, and there's a lot of moving parts of that whole area down there right now, and Encore is heavily involved in the, which I want to thank Greg for the, and you, for the extension of Prescott Street. That's really a huge benefit to the neighborhood. Those cousins would have, right now, it's going to be a long-term benefit for that neighborhood in a great way. What does this get us for further along in the phase of creation down there?
Sure. So, this gets us starting in, in the design work, and by that, the game plan would be, we would advance conceptual designs over the summer and come back to this council in the fall so we can talk more specifically. The bigger vision is to relocate, which the mayor has mentioned in his State of the City address and other events as well, relocating the stadium over to, down to River Green. That is a very large-scale project, a lot of logistics, a lot of programming work, and so on. We're at the very, very early stages of advancing that project. The idea is, again, to go through the summer, working through our office, engineering as well, and with a consultant to come back with some conceptual about potential options for program, potential option for design, and so on, with the intention to come back to the council for feedback before proceeding.
So, this is only, because it says design slash construction, this is only for design?
In fairness, it's only for design, yes. I wish.
And that's what I was saying, it's a small number figure for such a large project that we all know is going to...
If I may, it's a starter, if you will.
Sure. So, if it's for design, that's fine, no problem at all.
Counselor, if I may, one of the reasons why I had construction in there is because if we get to the point where we can get the design done for 1.3, I don't know that's optimistic, and we have 200,000 left over, if you put the terms "construction" in there too, that would give us the flexibility. So, in all likelihood, we may not be able to get any construction costs out of that, but it gives us the flexibility in case our design comes in under...
No, which is totally fine. And again, I fully support, I just wasn't sure if we were planning on doing one small phase of construction of something and then tying it into a bigger project. And then my last question is Elton and Tremont Drainage, which has been a major issue down that area. 650,000, I, Greg, is that, that's not going to fix the permanent solution. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Is it sort of just a phase of a bigger element that needs to transpire?
So, the council's already appropriated the work that was associated with the Southern Canal. We were reviewing all the permits necessary for the Southern Canal. We basically found some economy of permitting, including the Northern
We basically found some economy of permitting, including the Northern Canal. So, basically, both canals straddle either side of the former GE parcel. So, this 650,000 addresses the dredging of the Northern Canal, so it could be done concurrently through the same permitting process, same construction process.
So, this dredges the Northern Canal?
Correct.
And then that, explain that to me briefly if you can, and if not, it's okay. So, the Southern Canal, which we appropriated, will help with the major flooding that we see down on Tremont and Waters Ave and that neighborhood. What does the Northern Canal do for us?
So, right now, the two watersheds are cross-connected.
Okay.
So, there's a pipe that interconnects the two, so that if one backs up, the other backs up. This would disconnect those two systems and improve the capacity in both those areas.
So, it separates the two systems?
Correct.
So, it makes them two separate entities, if you will, that will work co-oscillating together, but they're separate systems. So, if one fails, both of them don't fail, and it doesn't become a flood zone like it has been.
One will no longer cause the other to fail?
Right. Okay, no, that's, that's great, and that's what I thought was the case, but I just wanted to clarify that that would be the case. Thank you for your time, I support this fully. Thank you.
I'll say that, Consular. Last speaker is Councilor Politano.
Good evening, gentlemen. How you doing today?
Well, and yourself?
Good, good, good. All right, can you take me through the high school vocational? I know during the school budget hearing, they mentioned, you know, how the program is going so far. What is this, what is this adding to the program? What is this?
This is going to add two additional classrooms at the high school. One is going to be medical billing, the other one will be web design. So, it's continuing the expansion of the existing program. Those are two areas that they're getting a lot of response on and recommendations from DESI moving forward. This actually, however, won't complete the vocational plan because next year, they're looking to add three additional classrooms where they get into more of the trades, the electrical, the HBAC, and the plumbing. But this year, we're looking at only doing the two in the building itself.
Great. I think it's a great program. I mean, the thing is, not every kid that goes through the school is college-bound, and it's good that we're able to offer them other alternatives so they can compete in the job market. The commercial triangle improvements, can you give me a little more idea of what that's, what's involved with that? What is the commercial triangle?
So, one of the projects I'm working on this summer is endeavoring to reduce some of the flooding in the Spring Street area that goes up to Route 16.
Just hit my favorite topic, yeah. Thank you.
I'm trying not to use the word "market culvert" for once. So, pardon me.
I wasn't sure whether I was going to ask that, that question about that, because you've mentioned Sex Streets. So, thank you for bringing, you know, so, please.
So, the MBTA has one crossing under its tracks in that section, and that is one of the hydraulic restrictions in the up gradient neighborhood. Ultimately, the water at City Hall ends up going down through that neighborhood as well. So, when the MBTA came to me and said, "We'd like to line and replace this culvert," I said, "Okay, you want to fix this, time to bring it up to code."
Nice.
It just so happens that the MBTA has a pipe jacking program that they do every August. And they said, "Okay, we can pipe jack a number of pipes under the tracks for you instead of doing this track outage, full excavation, you know, heavy-duty type project." And so, if I can get five or six pipes under the tracks alleviating Spring Street, Garden Street, Adams Furniture, the next street down, that would provide new outlets to what would, what is otherwise the current restriction in that area, at which point I can put new tide gates or check valves in the open swale that everyone knows leads into our favorite topic.
I know we've had a lot of talk about this, and the biggest problem with fixing, biggest issue with fixing the problem is the costs. So, this sounds to me like this arrangement with the MBTA is going to help in that area significantly?
Yeah. Basically, if I required them to replace their existing culvert, they would be into a bridge permit and structural, you know, calculations, and then there'd be downtime for the commuter rail and any number of other headaches. If they can pipe jack under the rail, it ultimately saves them time and money from what I would otherwise push them towards. So, this has the benefit of not only replacing that crossing, but also providing us the other crossings that we should otherwise have in that area to alleviate the neighborhood.
Now, the flooding we get on Spring, is that also what's occurring on, is it Third Street?
Third Street is complicated, but they're ultimately are related, they're in the same neighborhood.
It looks like it's on, more on the Chelsea side than the Everett side, but it's always hard to gauge.
Right. So, depending on, depending on the tide of the day, a lot of these areas are at the confluence of storm surge, coastal storm surge, and inland flooding. So, it depends on the event to say what the cause was. And then there's always the fun things like, you know, there's a chunk of concrete that somebody put down a pipe, so.
Counsel, excuse me. We're, I know you, well, going last isn't always good. We have a, we're five minutes beyond the 6:30 meeting.
Okay.
So, we, if you want to refer us to?
I just have one other question, but I understand, how do you want me to handle that?
I couldn't hear you. What was that?
I said, "I just have one other question."
Okay.
How do you want me to handle that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. Now, again, my big concern with any, with capital flow has always been that we're borrowing. Where do, where do we, where do we stand today at present debt that's bonded? How much more is this going to add? What's coming off? Usually, we get some type of breakdown sheet, and we don't have that just in front of us. Can you shed some light on that?
Sure. So, I know we're running late. Any additional questions, anybody has that, as they review this over the next couple of weeks, feel free to pop out. Within your budget books, I actually do include all your pro forma debt schedules, but what I can do is expand on that a little bit so that you can see updated debt and what's coming off, so you can see what the impact is, so I can have that before your next meeting. But you already do have full pro forma debt schedules in your budget books.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. There's no more questions?
Make a motion, excuse customary thanks.
Thank you very much.
Can you just accept this? You can. It's just a presentation.
Does Chairman, make a motion, accept the presentation, place on file?
Second motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. This meeting?
Motion adjourned. This meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned.
Counselors, we have to start another meeting on Community and Business Development, so if we could, please have the clerk call the roll.
This is the Committee of Community Business and Development. This is Monday, June 10, 2019, we're about 6:30, 7:00 PM. I have Counselor DePrio.
Here.
I have Counselor Capone.
Yep.
I have Counselor McKinnon.
Yep.
And I have Counselor Politano.
We have already saluted the flag, so I'll accept the motion for the, have the clerk read the first item, and the only item on the agenda.
It's a petition filed by Counselor Rittendell, so is President. With the Ever City Council approves a new open-air parking license from Monsilio Monte Dicio at 108, 114 Spring Street.
Do we have them? Are they in the audience?
The petitioner is here, if you'd like to invite him up.
Can we have the petitioner before us?
Could we also have our city clerk before us as well?
Okay. So, the motion is to have the petitioner up. Sir, if you could please come up to the mic, here in our city clerk. Before you speak, there's a button you have to press there, sir. Okay, very good. Please state your name and address.
Joxan Montoya, 114 Spring Street, Everett.
Sergio Canello, city clerk for the city of Everett.
Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon?
Seeing that we just, we received this just now, could you give us, like, one second just to read it?
Do you have questions? Counselor Politano?
Thank you. Good evening, Reverend.
Good evening.
All right, I know that you've given us this information at our last meeting, and you provided us a little more detail. Now, vehicles that are stored for shipment, can you elaborate a little bit on that? I mean, how many vehicles?
It'll be no more than probably one or two trucks that we get for donations. We put, you know, household goods, clothes, canned food for third-world countries, and then we ship them out. They probably won't be there for more than a 30-day period at a time. They'll be different vehicles because we always do charity donations.
All right, so are these like, are these like, you know, quarter-ton?
Yes, they're usually like 24-foot box trucks. I don't think we've ever had anything bigger than that. Occasionally, we use containers too, to ship to certain countries, like in the Caribbean, because, you know, trucks are not given like every day. Therefore, in order to keep the charity going, we do containers.
Security on the spot, watching these things?
Yes, there's always personnel there.
24 hours?
Not 24 hours, no, but we have fenced in, it's fenced in parking.
I guess what I'm having a little difficulty trying to see is, I've reviewed numerous open-air lots in my career here, and I'm just having a hard time understanding this particular situation.
Okay.
Generally, open-air lots are storage of vehicles, you're talking one truck. You know, it's, it's an area that could very easily become blighted without some concerns.
That is, yes.
And that's, we're trying to clean up that area. As you heard, the city's going to be redoing, going to be doing the second half of Second Street.
Yes.
Which is just going to add to, you know, the improvement of your area.
Most of the parking will be? Most of the, okay, most of the parking, yeah, I speak very loud.
No, no, speak into it because it's televised, but you don't have to hold it down.
Oh, okay. Most of the parking is going to be used only for members of the congregation, most of the time. We're going to have four services a week. They'll be bilingual, of course, so you're welcome too. Nevertheless, the parking will be strictly used for members only. What I'm trying to get the license for is, for example, we have three 24-passenger vans and one bus for like long trips of, you know, for the mission, missionary events, if you will, and we need to park those within the parking lot. Therefore, that's why we requested the open-air parking license. During development of construction, we might have, you know, heavy-duty equipment up to a certain level parked in there based on the contractor needs. Other than that, it will be just strictly for the congregation and private property of the church, I'm sorry.
When you say contractors now, you're talking about while they're paving this over, or?
No, no, I'm talking about the ones, we have a development going on, as you know, we have to, there's a change of occupancy going on over there, because the property used to be where they used to mix oil and all that stuff, so it hasn't been that easy, if you know what I mean. But that's the reason we need the parking. We want to do everything right. We want to be in compliance with the city in every way.
The, I always am asking this because you mentioned the commercial, the contract vehicles, that's something that is additional. Now, how long is that project going to be going on? When will that not be a concern, have commercial, have those type of contracted vehicles there?
I'd say six months tops. I mean, that's when we're planning on moving, I mean, we're planning on moving in. Right now, we're paying two rents and all that, so we're trying to establish Phase One so we can move in. There'll be another phase of construction, but we're going to do that one more subtle, if you will, taking our time doing it. But right now, we've got to do Phase One, which will actually start the congregation, and we can actually occupy the place.
Right. Thank you, Reverend.
Not a problem.
Counselor McKinnon, I believe, and then Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, to our invited guests. You mentioned box trucks, and you mentioned container, cargo containers, is that what you said?
Yes, they'll be like the ones that go on ships, sea land containers, if you will.
So, it's basically like you could hook up an 18-wheel truck to it?
Yes, to bring it in, but then they drop it. In other words, the semi will not be in the container while it's being worked on.
They just kind of drop it?
Yes.
How many containers do you have down there?
Well, right now, we don't have any, but it'll probably be one or two, might be a 20-footer and a 40. It all depends on where we're sending the charity to and how much stuff, because sometimes, believe it or not, people bring stuff and they just drop it in a front door, and, yeah, it becomes an issue.
So, then, the other, how many trucks are going to be down there for the, for storage of this type of stuff, yeah?
Yes, no more than three, two or three.
And how big, box trucks?
Probably between 14- to 24-foot boxes.
And, let me see. So, you're going to store this for how long of a period of time? Is this months or weeks?
Well, because we don't keep the same vehicles, we, they're always being shipped, so it might be there for two weeks, and then we get another one that probably won't go on until the next shipment, which will probably be between four and five weeks.
And how many parishioners are in your congregation?
250.
So, 250?
Yes.
And what are the hours of operation you're going to be doing?
We haven't actually put the schedule down of services. Where we are now, we're given three, one Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00, one Friday also from 7:00 to 9:00, and Sundays from 1:30 to 5:00, based on the fact that there's three ministries in the same facility.
1:30 to 5:00 on Sunday?
Yeah. Sundays is, you know, a service with everything.
Okay. So, and you're, just, can you give me a brief description of where you are?
114.
Are you off Lewis Street?
Yes. 108, 114 Spring Street.
So, you go down Lewis, you take a left?
Nothing to do with Lewis.
No, you, you?
No, you go Second Street, then you take a right on Spring, where the one, right in the corner with Second.
Oh, okay.
Where the, where the oil mixing plant used to be?
Yeah.
That's the same facility.
I was getting confused with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Going down Lewis and taking a left.
Literally right on Second.
Where the art gallery is?
He's right on the corner of Second there.
All right. So, now that I know where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Behind the, I've been there, actually, to the art gallery. I'm, I kind of paint too.
I mean, do you see the concern that we have, and there's a councilman, and both councilmen are in the ward?
Oh, yes.
So, we have, we have great concern with that.
Of course.
Plus, what you're going to be introducing to is, you have, you know, the cars are really not going to be an issue, I don't think, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Just the box trucks.
The box trucks, they will not be in quantities. Like I said, it might be one, and then there might be a couple, but for no longer than a period of five to six weeks, if we get the donation before that, before the first shipment. I don't, you know, there's a certain process in U.S. Customs for, with the dark receipts and the exports.
You're going to be shipping out of where, South Austin?
We usually do it from sea land in New York, but, or Fall River.
Oh, so.
The containers are usually brought up from New York. I think it's New Jersey.
No, if I do, I'll, I'll ask. I'm good right now.
Counselor Capone?
to do, and with regards to number three, which says, "Some unregistered commercial vehicles for overseas donations, they'll be worked on, loading with textile goods, blah, blah, blah." When you say "worked on," you mean loading the truck?
Yes, loading, not mechanically, yes, yes. We're talking cargo-wise, not, you know, mechanically.
Okay, and then one of the things you have here is passenger transportation vehicles. I think you mentioned 324 passenger vans in one bus?
Yes, that's the church. We use the three to, on Sundays, we, you know, put them in certain spots and pick up people and bring them to the congregation, and the bus is for long trips, if you know.
Okay, and how long is that bus? How many seats are on there?
The big bus, I think it's 48.
Okay.
And then the other are 24. The bus is usually just parked there. They are registered, of course.
Sure.
Because, you know, we travel with them, but...
And those would always be there?
They're always, yes, those will always be there, yes.
Okay. And then the other one was about heavy equipment when you're doing work, but I would imagine as you were getting permits, you probably could...
Exactly. It's part of the permit process.
Okay. And then the cargo containers, the box trucks, it sounded like it depends on what you get for donations and all that.
Yes, yes.
You're not going to be keeping, I'm asking, so...
Yes, yes.
Are you gonna be keeping box trucks permanently on site?
No, no.
Okay.
They're all for, they're usually donations.
Okay, so just as it's donated and it's being loaded, and then it's gonna go?
And then it's shipped out, yes. It's never the same, it's never the same vehicle there all the time. They're always different, and...
Okay.
Because they're all donations.
God willing?
God willing.
What type of donations do we think we're having? How frequently do you think cargo containers are...
Like I said, we usually get like bags of clothes, they just bring them and put them in our front door. It gets out of control sometimes, because we run out of room. Like, right now, we have like all the rooms inside the building, we can't put any more stuff in there. We gotta start shipping it out, and to do it in single bundles, it's too much.
Right. Are you looking to do any kind of a permanent container on-site with regards to coordinating what gets dropped off?
No, no, no. We don't have anything permanent.
Okay. And I don't have any other questions for you, but I do have a question for our clerk.
Yes.
So with this open-air parking license, what is the individual able to do without this versus with this?
Yeah, so obviously, some of the work is by right, so we don't have authority over that. That mean the temporary construction vehicles, that's part of his construction process, that's permitting through ISD building. The general parking for his parishioners, that's part of doing business for the operation. Really why he asked for this was the unregistered vehicles will have at certain times, and the parking of the, what do you call those, containers? Because you're leaving things out there for longer periods of time. It's not just for a few hours, it's for days or weeks at the place.
Days, yes.
And then shipping it out, and it'll be a constant rotation. So that way, when inspectors go by and they see an unregistered vehicle, they'll look in the file and see that there's an open-air parking, and they won't get a fine. So you need that, because otherwise, you know, either my staff or ISD would go by and find them for having unregistered vehicles on the lot.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
To the gentleman, again, I saw this plan over here that our clerk had brought up for us to look at. Looks like you're proposing 56 parking lots?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know what the square footage is for the parking?
For the parking, it's 21,972.
Okay. And do you know how big the entire parcel is?
It's 43,300 and something. I have those numbers in my head, I currently...
Okay, so about half, then.
Yes, yes.
It's a good size. Okay, and your intention is that bringing a box truck, or actually, if you get a donation of a box truck and you don't yet have stuff to put in it, you're looking to hold the box truck on-site until...
Yes, that's when rotations come out, because if the ship that's being used, it leaves, say, next week, and we, then we get another one almost when the ship is leaving, then we'll have to wait for the next rotation, which takes about five to six weeks to get the process going. It'll probably never be the same vehicle for a longer period than that.
Sure. And same thing with containers?
Same thing with containers, yes.
Okay, so...
It's a little different with the containers, because the containers are brought to go in the following ship, therefore, we can't miss it. There's a fine for that, and...
Okay.
Even though it's a private organization, you know, they do put fines based on delays, because it's under contract.
Okay, so you're thinking maybe a five to six-week window is probably the longest any one item will be there?
It's probably be the longest, yes, for a container to be there, correct.
Okay. And as far as, and again, this would be for our clerk, as far as hours of operation with regards to loading vehicles, containers, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, these would be part of your restrictions, so you, I mean, it's still, that's part of your license. You can't restrict the parishioners' part, but you can restrict offloading and unloading. So we would not want it before 6:00 a.m., 7:00 a.m., whatever you decided, and not past, you know, 7, 8 o'clock at night, because you're in a more industrial area, so you could push it till eight or something, but you don't, you have to do five. It's at your discretion.
Okay. And the final question for you. How many, well, what do you see for hours of operation in terms of doing this, loading, unloading? What kind of hours are you looking for?
Usually, because we get help within the congregation, so it'd probably be on the weekends, or probably after work hours, you know, we're talking four or five, depending on the amount of donations that we get, putting them in the truck appropriately to get the most space used, probably, to, you know, get rid of most of the stuff.
So what would be the earliest hour that you'd wanna start? And what would be the latest hour?
It'll never be in the morning. I tell you that. Most of the guys that usually help and work in that department, they work.
So maybe 8 o'clock, it might be a weekend, they might be able to help out.
Yes, now, in the weekend, it'll probably be after 8, 9 o'clock, and probably no later than 1, because...
Okay, and during the week?
When you're doing pro bono work, nobody will wanna work more than four hours, if you know what I mean.
Sure, so the earliest you'd be doing is probably around 8 o'clock or so?
Yes.
And then what do you think the latest you'd be looking to try to?
Probably no more than 6 or 7. We usually have services that start at 6:30, so I don't think anybody wants to miss that, you know, that's most important for us, so we'll probably be shutting down a couple of hours before any of the services begin.
And is that during the week, or?
That's during the week.
Okay, so you think that comfortably by 7 o'clock, both weekends, you could, you would be done?
Yes, before that.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I got a question. Can I have a question?
Thank you, Madam.
I want to ask a question. I got one question. Do you know we're looking for the right...
Right now, where are you gonna be storing all this material?
The donations, you mean?
Yes.
We have them at our other church right now.
Where is that?
229 Chestnut Street in Chelsea.
Okay.
And some of it, of course, is in the rooms of storage inside the building, but we're running out of room, even though they're bigger.
So here, are you gonna be building a storage facility as well?
No.
So...
Once we lift up the temple, it'll be just a worship place.
And then the only storage will be in these containers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, just a couple of questions. Now, the parking lot's gonna be on the side, but it's currently a tank?
No, there's nothing there. Everything's been taken off, tank is gone. We've had, actually, we lifted up the floor, if you will, of the parking lot, almost 22 inches from where it was, because it was contaminated, and we couldn't dig, so we went up.